Bless the members of this Assembly, the citizens that are present at this meeting, and all the residents of the City of Madeira Beach. We pray that our work this evening will find favor in your sight. Amen. Please remain standing for the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the City Clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Black.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Weinstein.
Here.
Commissioner Andrews.
Here.
Commissioner Douthier.
Present.
Before we go on with the agenda, I just want to recognize our newest member, Chaz Jordan, our Director of Marina and Public Works. So, welcome. Thanks for being here tonight. Next, we have a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Will the City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Douthier.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hodges.
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews.
Yes.
Commissioner Weinstein.
Yes.
Mayor Black.
Yes. We have no dialogues this evening. The next item is Proclamations, and it is for the 50th Anniversary of Municipal Clerks' Week. And if the Clerk will join me at the podium...
Proclamation, 50th Anniversary of Municipal Clerks' Week, May 5th through the 11th, 2019. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of municipal clerk provides the professional links between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and the agencies of governments at other levels, and whereas the city is where the municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, whereas municipal clerk continually strives to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education, programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meeting of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations, whereas it is most important that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. Now therefore I, Maggie Black, Mayor of the City of Madeira Beach, do recognize the week of May 5th through May 11th, 2019, as Municipal Clerks' Week, and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk Clara Van Blargen, and to all municipal clerks for all the vital services they perform, and for their exemplary dedication to the communities that they represent.
Thank you. I also want to say thank you to my deputy clerk Andrea Gamble. She does a wonderful job, and she keeps everything afloat, and I really appreciate her. Thank you, Mayor.
Next on the agenda, I'm going to call on Chief O'Neill.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. We have several recognitions to give to our fire department. It's always a pleasure to present to them because they do give so much to our community. We have several announcements to make, so what we're going to do is we're going to get them all up here at one time, and then we'll do a photo op at the end.
Okay.
First off is our Firefighter of the Year, which is actually a very prestigious award because it's an award that is given by the peers of the fire department. This year's Firefighter of the Year came to employment with the City of Madeira Beach in 2007. Since that time, he's always been willing to step up and step forward any time there's a task or a duty to be taken on. He's active in our water rescue program, our basic life support instructor. He is the lead instructor for Clover, our canine dog. He's responsible for our pre-incident planning coordination, and he is an acting company officer. All of these duties are above and beyond his tasks and responsibilities as a life support paramedic. If you remember back, he was promoted to the rank of Driver Engineer in 2015. He's very active in our community, involved in various civic associations. He's a member of Gulf Beach Masonic Lodge, and he also makes numerous presentations to different civic association and to our schoolchildren, teaching classes that bring awareness to the fire service and fire prevention programs. Since his employment, he's been obviously a very busy individual, but he still finds time for his wife, who's a full-time nurse, Joanna, and their three elementary school boys, Jaden, Nolan, and Nathan. And even if that wasn't enough, he also teaches martial arts on his off time, which there's not very much of that for him. But at this time, it's my pleasure to present to you our Firefighter of the Year, paramedic, Driver Engineer Dominic Buehler. Comments? Thoughts?
I'd just like to use this. I'd just like to thank everybody and thank the guys, because I know that every year when we do this, everybody kind of gets together and picks from the guys. So it means more than just being from the office, although that does mean a lot. But it also comes from the guys, too. So I appreciate it very much, guys. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to ask Dominic's wife Joanna and their three boys to come up and present the plaque for Firefighter of the Year. A couple of little boys were a little hesitant about coming up here, but come on, guys.
Come on.
There you go. Our next recognition goes to our five-year service award recipients, and all of these gentlemen have been with the department, obviously, for five years, but they give so much of their time and their dedication to our fire service. And those awards will be presented by the City Manager to Driver Engineer Jamie McGoye and Firefighter John Sleppi. Gentlemen, if you would come forward, please. This is your time. No? No? Gentlemen, thank you very much for your support and dedication to the fire service. And probably the highlight of the evening, not taking anything away from the guys who have already been up here, but our canine good citizenship certification that has been earned by our firehouse dog Clover and her three trainers. Beginning back in April of last year, we received Clover, but we knew that she was going to need a lot of additional training and work. She had a lot of puppy skills that needed to be polished up to make sure that she was going to be a good citizen for our community and a good representative of the Madeira Beach Fire Department. So her good citizenship, or good canine citizenship award, she actually earned back April 4th of this year. This examination is a 10-step, non-competitive testing process for dogs, and it's a prerequisite for many other therapy dog programs. It was especially challenging for Clover, because normally you only have to test one. Because of the way the fire department is set up, so they're on duty for 24 hours at a time, and then all for 48 hours, she actually was assigned three separate trainers. So all three of those trainers had to be trained, and Clover had to be trained with them. So when the testing came around, Clover actually had to test out three separate times, and she did very well. This testing program is offered to us through the American Kennel Association. It teaches dogs good manners, and it also teaches the owners good ownership practices as well. She learns obedience, agility, tracking, and performance events. She is, to ensure that she is well-recommended and well-represented within her community. She's developed a special bond with each one of her trainers, and she provides the emotional support and the intellectual stimulation for them to all work together as one and to become a team. They have developed a very special bond, not only with her, but also with her trainers, which we will talk about in just a few minutes. So my congratulations, and if you would please come up. Engineer Buehler, Driver Engineer Ryan Roberts is unable to be with us tonight, and Eric Ublis, that's her three trainers. Gentlemen, if you would come forward. And everybody loves Clover. She is like the highlight of everybody's day, I think. The next award goes to the recognition of the lady who has made all of Clover's training possible for us, and that's Judy... And Judy, I'm going to butcher your name. Bordenon. Is that close enough? That's close enough. Okay. Judy has been outstanding to work with, and she has done so much for Clover and the training that she has received. We know that there's going to be an excitable situation that Clover's involved in, operating with the community, and she has helped us work through so many of those things. Clover, at only 13 weeks old, was given to the department. She was a rescue animal, and she had a lot of cute puppy habits that needed to be polished up before she was able to take the responsibility of being part of the Madeira Beach Fire Department and becoming our ambassador. Judy was instrumental and stepped forward and was willing to take Clover on, on a two-week period, to help train her and get her educated and proficient in what she needed to do and be as a part of the Madeira Beach Fire Department. Judy works with Sirius Canine Services for Dogs and Training Center, and offered this program to Clover, and this training continues today. Clover's learned many commands, such as come, stop, sit, stay. Good dog. She also was very concerned with... I had a lot of reservations. We initially talked about having a dog in the fire station. Number one, from a safety standpoint, that when the guys run out for a call, I didn't want them tripping over Clover, or, God forbid, something happened to her to get underneath one of the apparatus. So she's actually been trained. Whenever the fire station alarms go off, Clover actually goes into her area, her cage, and she stays there basically until the firefighters get back, or until someone comes in and releases her from her area. But Judy's been instrumental in all the training, not only for Clover, but also for the firefighters. She continues to volunteer her time and has donated literally tens of thousands of dollars to her training exercise. So it's my pleasure to introduce to you Mr. Judy Bordenon. And Judy, would you have any comments that you'd like to make?
Just basically that I know that you've had to step up to the plate to go through all the months of training to be qualified with Clover for her canine good citizenship test. That would surprise me because you are a gentleman who's ready to do that. I know without a doubt, even after testing, that Clover's in very good hands, even as she lives my feet. She's in very good hands, but I can also say, given their character and their willingness to work with Clover in order to benefit the community, especially children who will benefit from this as well, learning about higher safety. As a member of this community for over 27 years, and now my parents having just moved to Madeira Beach last year, I know that they're in very capable of getting us to... And I can feel this is going to be a joy.
I think it's only a verb that you put in the Firefighters with their good citizenship award, and yes, and you can put Clover's new canine good citizenship award. And all of them. It's been a joy. I have a lot of incredible skills. I'm very hard. And I know that they're... And the plaque reads, our deepest appreciation. Everybody give it to Judy. There you go, Bordenon. There you go. A Sirius Canine Service Dog and Training Center. Thank you for your commitment, dedication, and continued contribution to the development and training of Clover, the firehouse dog. And Judy, thank you so very much. I appreciate it. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Judy. We all appreciate you. I'm right behind you. Well, before we all come down, I just want to say congratulations. We've got the best fire department in the whole county, and congratulations to you, Judy B. So we're all going to go down?
Sure. Come on.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you again for your support. Chief O'Neill, before you leave the podium, can you also communicate how, by the activities and the support that we've had from partner agencies with regards to what we've done in providing a home for Clover, how your peer agencies across the county and across the region have followed suit behind your department?
Absolutely. Behind your direction. I wasn't a big fan to start with, and I've told everybody that from day one. The firefighters will tell you that as well. But it's really made a huge impact on, I think, the fire department's attitude and their perception. You know, there's a lot of information about post-traumatic stress for firefighters. I think eventually in the future, this type of training will be transitioned into that post-traumatic stress initiative that's being done by the fire service. There's also a, one of the other firefighters up in North County has adopted a firehouse, a dog that was a rescue dog as well, our own. Do we have Denali with us tonight? You didn't bring Denali? Denali is another rescue dog that had been through a bad situation as well as what Clover had gone through. And now Clover is actually giving back and helping Denali with some of her skills and some of her training. So it's really working out well all the way around, I think, for the firefighters and the community, as well as for the rescue animals that we've made. So we're very pleased with that, for sure.
Well, thanks again. Congratulations to all of you, and keep up the good work. Thank you. I think we'll now take a five-minute recess while I'm sure some of you will be leaving the audience, and then we'll reconvene at 6:35. Public comment? Public comment is only for items that are not on the agenda. If you wish to speak on anything about the agenda, you can do that at the time that item is brought up. Please remember to speak directly into a microphone with your name and home address, and to be civil and respectful.
Good evening, Mad Mayor, Commissioners, the audience here, and those at home. I'm Missy Hahn, President of the Treasure Island, Madeira Beach, Chamber of Commerce. And I'm here today to talk about our community health fair, which is next Thursday. And I just want to emphasize, especially to our audience at home, this is free to the public. This is one time the chambers say, hey, we want to open our doors, we want to invite everybody. And I have passed around flyers, and it will be on your website in the next couple of days, the information. But like blood pressure testing, the Treasure Island Fire Department's coming out doing blood pressure checks. And I... coming out doing blood pressure checks. And I think the Madeira Beach Fire Department should bring Clover. That's a very good wellness check. But I just wanted to let everyone know that they are invited. This is open to the public. First hundred people that show up will get a little swag bag with all goodies from our members. Thank you for your time and attention.
Doesn't have buttons. Robert Preston, 425 South Bay Shore Drive, Madeira Beach. When I was out campaigning, I was on the street a lot. And there were some people that I saw every morning that I was just really, really impressed about. And I don't know if they get enough accolades for it, but the people that run around with the five-gallon buckets that are the trash pirates, they do an amazing job of cleaning up our streets. And I think they ought to be recognized from time to time for the volunteering that they do in picking up garbage, cigarette butts, straws, and everything that's in our streets. You've seen them work in John's Pass area. I've seen them in there and around Gulf Boulevard and what have you. And it's, they're out there every day, and it's nice to see them. So, that's one of the good things I'd like to say. The other thing I have is, this is quite interesting. What I handed to you is two articles from the Palm Beach Post. One was in March 26th and one April 8th, yesterday. And it appears that our city manager and the commissioner over there have been communicating about his reemployment in Riviera Beach. And I think it ought to be brought to the attention because if he's providing input or effort into that, then he's losing efforts that should be done in Madeira Beach. So, we need to understand where he's coming from, if he's thinking about leaving, or whatever the case may be. But I think it's pretty interesting because it's, in the articles it says he's been in communication on a daily basis with the folks in Riviera Beach. And they won the election on bringing him back to Riviera Beach. And that was pretty impressive. So, it might be something that you want to have a communication with your city manager in bringing it out and open. Is he looking for another job, or what? Thank you.
Please speak into the microphone. We have an assistant.
My name is Cindy Stiles. My address is 4828 Mary Mar Drive, Madeira Beach. And I am a Pinellas County native. Custom Glass Etchings, Send Bad's Treasures, The Post Office, Colette's Fashions. What do these businesses have in common? They are all businesses who reside in buildings that are mid-century architecture, which is recognized by the National Register of Historic Places. Just what is mid-century architecture? They are buildings that were built approximately between 1933 and 1965. And even though some people think that this style is ugly, it is at the forefront of historical preservation. So why is this? Because a building only has to be 50 years old to be historic. And since mid-century architecture is the newest of the old, the staff who oversee the National Register of Historic Places is finding historical significance to list this type of architecture in its registry. To put it plainly, historical mid-century architecture is downtown Madeira. It is motels such as the Schooner and Holiday Isle. It is the Bamboo Beer Garden, the Friendly Fisherman. It is the small fishing cottages that still stand on Madeira Beach. It is the Candy Kitchen and Church by the Sea. It is the Win Dixie and its surrounding buildings, and the Madeira Beach Library. In other words, Madeira Beach has many mid-century architecture buildings that still stand today, and we must save them. We must save them not only for my heritage, but Florida's heritage. We must save them so that we can educate future generations of how the Pinellas County beaches came to be. If we continue to tear down these buildings, future generations will not know the historical significance of mid-century architecture, and history will be lost forever. Historical preservation generates billions of dollars in heritage tourism for the state of Florida. That is why the state of Florida encourages what is called the Main Street Program. And just what is the Main Street Program? It is a technical assistance program with the goal of revitalizing historic downtowns such as downtown Madeira, and encouraging economic development with the context of historic preservation. It offers many grants to assist with the expense of revitalizing historic downtowns, and also offers technical resources. There are many cities in Florida that are taking advantage of the Main Street Program. Some of these cities include the Edge of District of St. Petersburg, Grand Central Station of St. Petersburg, Brooksville, Newport Ritchie, and Plant City. These are just some of the many cities who have taken advantage of the many grants and talented resources to help them to revitalize their downtowns. And these cities are now thriving due to the impact of heritage tourism. There is a study that was done by the University of Florida. It has been proven in that study that not only does heritage tourism create billions of dollars in income even during economic hard times, but it also creates jobs, contributes to local and state tax collection, creates in-state wealth, brings in a billion-dollar industry, attracts visitors who spend billions visiting historical sites, brings citizens, visitors, and dollars back to the heart of their communities through the Main Street Program. To sum it up, I'm asking the Madeira Beach City Council to please adopt a preservation ordinance and stop tearing down my heritage. Stop tearing down Florida's heritage. Did you know-
Sorry, your three minutes are up.
What?
Your three minutes are up.
I know. Did you know-
Just put the microphone down.
Thank you.
I would like to say for the record, I have spoken to some people about preservation. And there are some issues depending on where they want to, you know, redevelop it. And it might not be as applicable to our town as other towns. But we can have more discussions on that. And as far as what's gone on so far, I just think it's important for people to know that this commission did not vote on all those buildings. And, you know, going forward, since I've been on the commission in the past two years, we have not approved any other additional development. So I just wanted to put that out there. Yes, sir, you want to speak?
Before we go on, Madam Mayor-
Oh, excuse me.
Could we have some type of meeting, or have the city have like a town hall meeting to explain to the residents what's going on, and at the same time, bring back to us some information on this, and like at the next workshop, so we can talk about this a little bit more, please?
Madam Mayor, if it is the board of the, if it is the desires of the board staff can put together some marketing material and put out a publication to encourage people to show up for a town hall-style question-and-answer forum about the development projects that are happening in the community.
I think that'd be a great idea.
And we can share with you briefly some of the concepts at your April 23rd workshop.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. My name's Chuck Dillon. I live 529 Lillian Drive. I've been here seven years and love everything that's been going on. But ultimately, what I would like to know about is when we could get our markers back out on the shores. As we're getting closer to summertime with the jet skis and people with boats and everything, it's a very dangerous situation out there. Without having the boys, shoreline boys in place, it's running wild. Treasure Island got theirs back in place, and I know we lost ours, the few we had from the hurricane, but I think it's time to get them back. And I don't know what it takes to do that, but I think we should protect our shorelines, safety in all of our guests and people at the beach. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Ms. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Attorney. Of course, I just lost where I was.
Name and address first.
480 137th Avenue Circle.
And your name?
It's Jim Rostek. While my wife looks for this. I'm not sure if you know this or not. We have some neighbors at 450 237th Avenue Circle, and either city employee or someone authorized by the city has allowed, has went onto their property and removed screens on their flood openings on their home while they weren't home. And I'm concerned about that and who has done this. He's going to call the city manager and schedule a meeting. But why would a city employee or someone representing the city go on someone's private property? This makes no sense, and it's scary. Item number two, in amongst our complaints, of which two have been filed against your city building official, we'd like to get an update there if you know anything. Item number three is the fact that there was a polluted water discharge on 2/21/19 that I called the city of Madeira Beach, and unfortunately, they came out, the building official, along with a representative from Public Works, and I was blown off. I already knew the answer with the Florida code prior to calling them. After the incident, I called the city manager, and some remediation took place the next day. Coupled that with the fact that, and I don't know if Mr. DeSantis has filed the complaint against the builder, as he's been instructed to do by his boss, the city manager, coupled with these four items, we renew our request for an immediate suspension of him until all of these allegations are investigated. He's doing bad things to good people, and we're not going to let this continue. Let someone from Madeira Beach come on our property and remove something. And we don't know who did this to the neighbors, although the neighbor is going to call and meet with the city manager. But to come on to someone's personal property, private property, and remove things, bad things are going on. I renew our request to suspend Frank DeSantis. He's doing bad things to good people. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? All right, public comment is now closed. Next, we have the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
Yes, Mayor. I've reviewed all of the minutes from February the 6th, 12th, 21st, March 4th, March 15th, March 19th, and March 26th, regular and special workshop meetings, and move to accept all of the minutes as presented.
Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Will the city clerk please close the roll?
Now, this is the consent item. There's three-
Yes.
...items on there. Okay. All of them.
Are we doing all three, or are we just doing-
Consent agenda is for all three.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Downser?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes. All right, next, under unfinished business, we have the seafood festival proposed agreement. City Manager?
Madam Mayor, members of the Board of Commissioners, the item before you this evening is to enter into a one-year agreement with the John's Pass Merchants Association for the purposes of administering the John's Pass Seafood Festival for a term of one year. The elements contained in the agreement allow for the city to be the sole concessionaire for parking, and that the event organizers will be responsible for the costs associated with police services to secure the perimeter, as well as to assist with traffic flow. One of the things that is unique to this agreement is that the city of Madeira Beach will be the concessionaire, sole concessionaire, for the provision of parking. This is something that there is no empirical data to support what the fiscal impact is as a result of the parking revenue. So this will give us a good opportunity to have some data to support this particular initiative. The intent behind how this agreement came to fruition was that both parties, Ms. Flynn and I, decided to come to the table and broker an arrangement that we thought was amicable on both parties, where in return, the city will not levy any fees below the amount of $8,500. Historically, the fees have been about $6,100 to $6,800 that the city has charged for services to support the seafood festival. When staff did an analysis, it also identified that the amount that is received from the seafood festival to support the event really is under 0% of value when you look at the total annual budget for the city of Madeira Beach. Staff recommends that the Board of Commissioners approves the one-year agreement, and staff stands prepared to answer any questions. One of the things that we also would like direction from the board on is, in any particular situation, when you're looking at a trend analysis or determining if it's a fiscal benefit, is looking at something more in line of a longer-term agreement. So, if the board would be inclined, staff would like for the board to consider at least a two-year agreement that allows for us to work through this particular year, as well as next year, and then be able to have some more data to determine whether parking is a huge value to us, or at the end of the day, we decide to say it's a business model specific to a festival that we're not interested in. But it also provides some reassurance for the community, reassurance for the event organizers. And I think we're in a lot better place than where we have been in subsequent years. And I think if the board is so inclined to entertain a two-year agreement, I believe that both parties will be amicable. And I think we'll see this issue hopefully be resolved one way or another for a little bit of time. So, staff stands prepared to answer any questions that the Board of Commissioners may have, and ultimately recommends approval of the contract.
I personally think it would be a show of good faith to go forward and extend it to a two-year contract. And as you said, then we'd have more data to go on in the future.
First off, I would like to ask Ms. Flynn a question, if she doesn't mind coming up. I just, on subject but off a subject. Are you a 501(c) nonprofit?
We're a 501(c) six.
Nonprofit?
Nonprofit.
Okay. That was my only question. The reason I ask that question is by federal law, and Ms. Weinstein brought up at the last meeting about the letter that Ms. Flynn put out. And according to federal law, it says, keep in mind, the 501(c)s nonprofit are strictly prohibited by the IRS from participating in campaigns either for or against political candidates to public office. And I bring this up to you, Mr. Andrews, because you're the one that said she had the right to speak. According to federal law, she does not have the right to speak if she's representing the 501(c) as a nonprofit. I'm saying that by federal law, she does not have the right to endorse or- I'm saying that by federal law, she does not have the right to endorse or for or against any campaign because they can lose their nonprofit status, period. And that's what Ms. Weinstein was bringing up. Last time, you said that she had the right to speak. She could speak as a public citizen, that's true. But she can't speak on behalf of the Johns Pass Association if it is a nonprofit organization. So I just wanted to bring that out.
Did you know that last meeting? No, you didn't.
No, I woke it up.
She had every right to say whatever she wanted to say up here and...
And then we can...
You know what? Let's not even talk about it.
Commissioner, a point of order, I don't think it's relevant to the issue that's in front of you tonight, if we could keep it to the topic of the agreement.
Okay.
I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Terrific. First off, yeah, I got a couple of questions. First off, we're not the sole parking concessionaire. There's a parking garage and there's Florida parking back there. So that's the first thing. Second thing is, I'm going to approve this, but you guys are asking the Board now to approve a two-year plan with no particular plan in place for the logistics on parking. Okay? No plan, okay? Basically, okay, there's $20, we're going to assume it's $20 and we're going to park cars. We have no idea how many spots there's going to be after the police tell us where we can park and where we can't park, okay? We don't know who's going to run the lot. We don't know who's going to handle the money. We don't have any type of plan in front of us. The reason I'm voting yes is I know that Mr. Hatch will come up with a plan because he knows how to do this, because we've done it before in the past. However, I think it's irresponsible for us to approve something more than one year. And Sunny is going to get my approval only because she needs this to go forward and we're just adding too much minutia to this. What we should be probably doing, you know, the other thing is, are the residents going to be parking for free? I know a couple of us on here said that they should be. That's going to cut into the numbers. Who's going to be handling the money? Are we going to need extra insurance for our employees that are going to be out there? What if one of them gets their foot run over by a car? We've got a lot of things to discuss here that we're not discussing and we're just going forward saying, okay, well, we'll work it out as we go. If I'm going to vote on something for two years, I'd like a little bit more information. In all honesty, I'd say, why don't we just beg Sunny to go back to last year's contract and we'll promise to stay out of our way, do our investigations this year, and then, if this makes sense, we dive into the parking next year when we get the logistics down so we know where we can park cars, how many cars we can park. What if it rains? It's a three-day festival, not a four-day festival now. We've got a lot of things that are still variables right now that we don't know about. And I understand, okay, let's give it a shot. But then we're going to be committed for two years for doing this without... I just think we're getting involved in too many things that have been going on for a really long time and have been going really well that we just leave well enough alone. Sorry.
What I would like to do is make a motion that we accept this with the addition of adding an RFP for the 2020 year, that we send it out for a bid for the 2020 year and anybody and everybody can bid on it. I just don't like, I feel the city's been held hostage this year. I think, I feel we have. So, you know, I'd say, let's go ahead with it this year, we'll see how it works out, and then let people put in for 2020. That would be my recommendation.
Madam Mayor? If I may, with regards to Commissioner Andrews' remarks, we would bring forward a comprehensive plan that will address all the items that he communicated. The contract is merely between both parties to see if there is an interest from the Board to execute the contract. Once the contract is executed, then staff would deploy the appropriate resources to bring forward how it will conceivably work. We have enough folks on staff that have substantial event experience that can be able to solidify a plan that works and working with Ms. Flynn, that's been doing this event for a long time, I'm sure that we can come up with something that is amicable to what the Board's desires are and also does not create any issues for those that visit. So we can definitely put that to bed once the agreement is executed.
Mayor?
You go ahead.
I feel bad over the fact that the Johns Pass Seafood Festival's been going on 37 years. We've never had a bit of problems anywhere. It always ran smooth. Sunny, you've done a great job keeping it together with the vendors and everything else that you do. And I know you plan a year in advance for this stuff. And I just feel like this year, for whatever reason, things have just got all discombobulated, want to use that term or not, and I don't understand the reasoning for it because it works. You've always made it work, it always ran smoothly, we've never had a problem. I apologize because I know that you've put a lot into it and I know this is going to be great again this year.
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to make a couple of comments. First of all, I'd like to revert back to the agreement between City of Madeira Beach. It's not Johns Pass Merchants Association, there is no such entity. It's Johns Pass Village Association, so that does need to be revised again, okay? The second comment I would like to ask is on number six of the agreement. Gator, is that where Gator Guards comes in, Mr. City Manager?
Yes.
Okay. And so the association is still responsible for the Gator Guards, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. The third comment I would like to make is that I think that there's just been so much misunderstanding and I would like, once again, to clarify and respect everybody's statements. But I think one of the reasons that the agreement was held up, well, I know one of the reasons that the agreement was held up so specifically last year was because health issues with regards to the porta-potties and Sheriff's Department issues with regards to the number of hours worked. There was definitely a conflict between the information that was required on the special events application versus the information that was given to us by those entities. And that's why, I mean, that's really why, you know, it took so long to get it together, okay? And so long for Ms. Flynn to get the approval. All the information was in conflict with everything else. So I'd like to make that comment. I'm not in favor of a two-year contract at all. In fact, I had some serious concerns about even a one-year contract. However, I will kind of bow down a wee bit because I think that we do want a seafood festival, we do want to keep it. But I do think that it needs to go out for, I think that 2019 is fine, but I think that we have to make a commitment to put it out, request for, quote, from other professional organizations also, and certainly invite the current organization to participate. So that's the only way I would go forward with the agreement. And if we could make those amendments to this agreement, then that would be satisfactory.
Madam Mayor, if I may, if I'm not mistaken, and Ms. Flynn can provide some additional insight, I believe all the information that she provided was accurate. I think it was a Scrivener's errors on the staff that brought that item forward that caused for the confusion. But I believe the information that she provided was everything that was requested and was accurate. And I think it was on the staff's side where the confusion occurred and the information was inaccurate. So we've since gone and taken steps to correct that, but she did provide the accurate information. Staff ended up putting the wrong name and created for that little issue.
That's fine. I just wanted to, you know, make that comment. But I do think that the two-year, at this point, with so much back and forth between the organization and between the city and between tourists, residents, business people, everybody, that I think that we need to hold back, keep it for a year if we want to, and then move forward. Thank you.
Okay. I just got one thing to add, and I agree, it should be a one-year contract. But the other point of this is, what are we putting out to bid? We're putting out the Johns Pass Seafood Festival out to bid? Sunny, if I'm correct, you own the naming rights to the Johns Pass Seafood Festival, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So what are we putting out to bid? We're going to do our own festival in Johns Pass?
We could.
You want to, you...
We could, I'm just saying we could.
Well, you could, sure. You could put merchants' tents in front of businesses. What kind of response do you think you would get from the businesses if they're not going to reap the benefits of the festival that's in front of there? So a guy's going to be selling T-shirts in front of a T-shirt shop...
And that's what they've done every year.
Correct. But they get the benefits of the marketing that Sunny's group provides. That's why the Merchants Association, I'm sorry, the Village Association, is responsible for this. Because what happens is, they go out, they take that money, they give half to charity, although you disagree with their charities. They give half to charity, they do half for marketing. What that marketing then does, that marketing then provides more people coming here, more people going to their shops, shopping more throughout the year, more people paying for parking in our parking meters, which makes Walt happy and it rises our revenues. And oh, by the fact that it rises our revenues, then our taxes can remain low. This is a total win-win and we are getting way too involved in this woman's business. She's been doing it for a long time and does a really, really good job. But we can't put something that she owns out to bid. That's ridiculous.
All right. I think what I'm hearing so far, I don't think we have to make any decisions about next year. I think, you know, whether we put it out for an RFP or not, there's nothing to be decided right now.
Madam Mayor, we've had a motion, I made a motion, it was seconded.
I know you did. No, it was not seconded.
I second the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I second the motion to allow the, move the motion to allow the festival continue based on the changes within the agreement, the name of the association, and adding that the, this agreement is a one-year, which it says it right in the, says it right in the contract. And go out to bid. And when I say go out to bid, I think that that's, it's a very professional type of thing that's done in organizations all over for many, many things, for many, you know, it doesn't qualify, it really doesn't disqualify, Commissioner Andrews, the fact of what the, how good or what level the organization is performing in the festival. I think it gives the opportunity to the entire city to determine what other organizations, what other professional organizations are out there that do these type of festivals. We've had many through the years, as you know, I mean, we've had many through the years, okay? Ms. Flynn has been with the organization, I think, since 2015? 14? Okay, 15 is the first year I remember, and I remember I worked at, but, I mean, I've seen this happen with our city and with this festival since 1980, so go figure.
Commissioner, what are we putting out? Ralph, get your pencil ready, because I don't know what she's putting out to bid.
I don't think we can put out to bid a seafood festival.
A seafood festival or the Johns Pass Seafood Festival?
Excuse me.
I'm sorry. Well, I'm sorry, Ralph.
I'll try not to overtalk people. We want to keep an eye on that because tapes get mixed up too when we're talking at the same time. I guess if you were wanting to put out some kind of bid or notice, you could put out a notice in the newspaper that the city is seeking special events of any and all types and people could apply to have special events in the city with proposals for special events. It wouldn't, couldn't be for the seafood festival and the Johns Pass Seafood Festival if they have that naming right and that's their festival. But you could seek other events, other festivals, if that was something that you wanted to do.
It's the, pardon me, it's the opportunity to find out what other organizations supply to the city, what services they supply, if they do it on an à la carte basis, do they do it on a full basis of everything from, you know, food trucks to parking? It's a way of determining what the, what the organization, what competition the organization has. I think it's an excellent method of bringing the very best professional organization to help with any seafood festival, and should it be the Johns Pass Village Association or another one, it's still a very, very common and very intelligent way of handling it, I think.
Where are we going to host it? In Johns Pass? Or we have an event field, we can host it out there. I've got no issue with that. We can't go into Johns Pass and host a festival in front of the merchants. We're going to, I wish we could strike that part of the, because Sunny needs this agreement done to go after her funding. I can't vote for going out to bid on something that we don't own. If somebody wants to come to us with a seafood festival, a separate seafood festival, why do we even have to talk about this being going out to bid? That doesn't make any sense. If somebody wants to come to us with an event, put an application in, terrific, let them put an application in, let them host their own event. I just really don't understand the concept here, except for trying to get under Sunny's skin. That seems to be the only thing I'm getting out of it.
Did the motion include going for an RFP?
Yes.
It did, I see. Okay.
Excuse me, just a minute. This is going beyond now. Go ahead, Sunny.
May I ask a question, please? If you RFP it, what are the benefits to the merchants? As of right now, we collect funds for advertising for the merchants. If the city takes this event over and RFPs it and you have to pay someone to run this event that you're not paying for right now, what's the benefits to the merchants? Right now, we put tents in front of the merchants and they understand it, it's one weekend, so they can have business all year long. If you take it over, you RFP it, have to pay an event coordinator, what's the benefit to the merchants?
Sunny, can I just ask a simple question? You may have already answered it for me, but Johns Pass Village is Johns Pass Village. The city cannot do an RFP on it, correct?
We own the rights to Johns Pass Seafood Festival.
Okay.
Johns Pass Village Association owns those rights.
So regardless...
Have for 38 years.
Okay, so regardless of anyone else comes in wanting to do it, they can't do it in Johns Pass.
Well, it's a city property, they can do it, it just can't be called Johns Pass Seafood Festival.
Johns Pass, okay. All right. So I wanted to make sure.
Can't call it that.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure on that. I was a little confused, that's all the conversation. Thank you.
And there have been years also...
As Commissioner Andrews pointed out also, we also have other city properties, event fields and things like that. You could have another festival with a different name on a different weekend or even the same weekend, a competing festival if you wanted, but you can't use that name.
Right. And Madam Mayor, I would like to just make the comment that in past years since the festival, since the Johns Pass Seafood Festival, there've been several years that I remember that the name has actually not been Johns Pass Seafood Festival. I think in 2002, it was called Johns Pass Music and Seafood Festival or something like that. So there's many variations for it. It's not that, you know, you're not defining it. Everybody knows there's a seafood festival in Johns Pass and irregardless of what, how you, how you name it, okay, it's, we're still going to have one. Thank you.
Well, I think we should open this up for public comment now. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Flynn.
Robert Preston, 425 South Bay Shore Drive, Madeira Beach. I just don't understand why there is such heartburn about something that has been working so well for so long, other than a personal vendetta or something like that against Sunny and the merchants at Johns Pass. It has worked well for years. Has it ever cost the city money to run that? You can't use the parking because you don't know what it is. What other hundreds of thousands of dollars does it bring to the community? I just don't understand where you're going with this. Why didn't you just leave it alone? You're diving into something that doesn't make any sense. It worked. It worked well. People enjoyed it. They made sure it was cleaned up. They paid the hard costs. But yet, you're still diving into this and trying to cause conflict where there should be none. Your job isn't to cause conflict. Your job is to support the city and this community. And you three up here are not doing it. And I don't understand why. I just don't understand why you want to cause so much conflict in the city. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak?
Larri Tyner, 4996, Miramar. I think we ought to go ahead and pass it without the stipulations. I mean, it's been in the newspaper, everybody's all excited, we're going to do it. If you decide during the year to change it, you can always just do it then, but we really need to get it passed where they can start with the funding to get it rolling. I'd hate to see it get messed up just on a little thing, but if you want to address it, you can do that later. Just on that.
Chuck Dillon, 529 Lillian, once again, by putting the RFP on it, you're complicating it. Just let it be done. If you want to RFP another event, RFP whatever you want. To get an RFP, you got to have legitimate people. And what if you RFP it and nobody gets a bid? What are you going to do then? Have nothing? Simple.
Anybody else? All right, public comment is now closed on this item. And I actually agree with the last gentleman. We should just go forward with the item as is, whether, to approve it as is. And we can talk about what, how we're going to forward later about the next festival. There's no need to solve all that right now.
Madam Mayor, the reason I asked for the RFP now is so other, whoever would like to bid on it, would have the opportunity to come in and see, you know, what's going on, how it's doing. If you ask them after the seafood festival, if you ask them in November to put out an RFP, they didn't see this year, so they have no idea what's going on. That's why I asked for the RFP now.
Well, I really don't think we have to do it at this meeting. We can have a discussion, you know, later on, a few months, or, but it's just, it just should be, do we approve this or not?
We need to do an amendment, to amend the motion? How do we handle it from here?
Yes, amend, it'd be a motion amended.
You have a, a motion and a second on the table that would require the maker of the motion to amend their motion, or you would have to vote on the motion, and depending on if one size prevails or not, the motion would fail, and then a new motion can be entertained.
Well, any more discussion then, before we call the roll?
I agree with you completely, Madam Mayor.
Would anyone like to amend the motion before we go forward? I know. All right, will the city clerk please call the roll?
I think you're just voting on the original motion now, and we'll see if it passes or fails. And if it fails, then you do another-
No, no.
I don't think so.
It's the original motion with the amending to the RFP.
Right. Okay, I want to make sure that we understand the motion. Can you read the motion, city clerk?
The motion, as I understood it, was to approve the agreement as is, and to put it out for an RFP.
For a term of-
That's the motion on the table that you'll be voting on now.
For a term of one year, correct.
To see if that passes. If that fails, then we'll need another motion.
That was motioned by Commissioner Dowther, and seconded by Commissioner Weinstein.
I think Commissioner Weinstein made a motion, amendment, to change the word merchants to the word village.
Yes.
That was her amendment. That's the only amendment.
You know, I'm, I'm willing to amend the motion to take that out, but I just do not want to be held hostage again, like we were this year, with the seafood festival. And I think the city was held hostage, we're going to go here, we're going to go there, whatever. That's why I asked for this. It's that way, I, and they have just as right to put in an RFP as anybody else, but then that way, I know the seafood festival will be staying here. And that is the reason I put it in that way. You know, that's what I'm, I'm trying to do. I'm trying to keep it here without the city being held hostage, and, you know, oh, we're going to go here, we're going to go there, you know, we're not going to do this, I don't want to go through that again. I don't think anybody does. You know, and Mr. Preston said, you know, that's exactly what happened. That's why it went back and forth, and every time we turned around, oh, Treasure Island's going to give us everything for free. This is, we're going to go to St. Pete Beach, we're going to do all these different things. So for quite a while, we, the city, had no idea what the heck was going on, or where it was going to be held, or how it was going to be held, or anything else. I, I just think by doing this, you know, the, the, we'll know that it's staying here. That's, that was my intent behind it. You know, if, if Ms. Flynn can come up here and tell me right now, it'll be here next year, but we can renegotiate, we don't stick with the same contract, but it'll definitely be here next year, then I'll pull that out.
Johns Pass Village merchants want the seafood festival in Johns Pass. We had options to go other places, and we're considering it based on what the commission here decided. We want to work out an agreement long-term. We don't want to go anywhere. The board, the board of directors, the merchants, it benefits Johns Pass, it benefits Madeira Beach. For the last five years, I've given my heart and soul to Johns Pass Village and Madeira Beach. We don't want it to go anywhere else, John.
Sunny, I understand that, but what I'm saying-
I can guarantee you, if you agree to this tonight, we will negotiate based on your city manager's, which we did this already, his recommendation. Let's look at the parking. Let's continue to grow this together. I just don't understand it. Let's come to an agreement, so I can go after elite funding and get this city and our merchants money, tourists, and grow the city. That's all I'm asking. Let's get this-
Then I will amend my motion for the one year. We'll go with the contract that's here. And like I've told the city manager, you know, these numbers that, and Doug brought out the same thing, the numbers they say on here for the parking, that's just pie in the sky. We have no friggin' idea what it's going to be. We do not know if it's going to be a hundred dollars or a million dollars, or, you know, where it's going to be in between those numbers. And, you know, and that's why I was saying this, you know, we have no idea what's going on. You know, and to say that we're going to go to this, that was my, that scared me. That's money out of the residents' pockets, and that's our job to do that, to take care of that. So, I will amend the motion.
Will you please state the motion, then?
That we accept the contract as written here, from date of April 4th, 2019, between the seafood festival and the city of Madeira Beach.
And do we have a second?
One second.
Any more discussion? Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Weinstein?
Unfortunately, I can't support it.
Thank you. No.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Blake?
Oh, yes. I was thinking ahead. Next on the agenda is the cleaning services contract. Public Works Director, Marina Director, Chaz Jordan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor and Commissioners, this memo will extend our current contract as per the agreement already in place with our cleaning services contractor, which is WNA Cleaning Services, for an additional year. This will cost the city $153,000, which is a slight increase from our previous year, but will be adopted or proposed in the FY 2020 budget to cover the expense. We have had a great working relationship with WNA, and we highly recommend them to continue providing this service. However, we also understand that the cost associated is getting higher, so it is staff's intent to put this out for a competitive process in the next year, and see what we can get from that. But with that, staff recommends approval of this contract extension, and I'm available for any questions.
I got questions. This, in, in 2015, it was signed by the previous city manager for $80,000. Four years later, we're at $153,000? To me, this just isn't right. I think, I think it needs to go out for a bid right now. You know, I understand the, the cost of his employees have gone up, the cost of products have gone up, but I think doubling it in four years, more, almost doubling it in four years, I think is just kind of ridiculous. Even at a 10% a year raise, he would only be at about $107,000, maybe $115,000, not $153,000.
Commissioner, if I may, one of the elements that's contained in the new contract that was not included in previous contracts is that the services for the custodial agreement merely spoke to the services that were being provided. The other side of it is the city was purchasing the cleaning supplies for the contractor. So instead of purchasing the supplies and letting the contractor utilizing the supplies, it was artificially not showing what the actual cost for the custodial. This agreement pulls in the 20-some thousand dollars worth of custodial supplies to make sure that that entity is responsible for procuring those items, securing those items, et cetera. As it stands right now, our concern is that the custodial contractor comes in, says we need to purchase X, Y, and Z, we purchase it, there's no checks and balance to ensure that it is actually being utilized here and not somewhere else. Now, we trust our contractor, but we thought that this is a better way to monitor and ensure that the products that are being utilized here at City Hall are utilized here at City Hall versus the program that we had in place, where we were paying for the service, but the custodial supplies were something that we would get invoices of a couple thousand dollars to get X, Y, and Z. We don't want to be in the supply ordering business, let the custodial contractor handle that. One of the things we've also looked at is going out through a competitive solicitation, because if you look at the backup documentation that's contained in the memorandum, the, the agreement has changed and modified in multiple iterations, and it's hard to pin down what the original contract was, where it grew, how it grew. Now we'll have a more defined scope of work, and the contract is far more clear and succinct and precise as to what needs to occur and how the arrangement is supposed to be communicated. But we certainly think that having a situation where the new Public Works Director can look at the services that are being provided and make a determination and a recommendation for this board to consider moving forward, but this vendor has operated with the existing contract in place for quite a, quite a long time at this moment.
What are we paying him a year now?
What we're paying now is, and I, I came up here just to clarify this, what we're paying right now for his, their services, $116,864.84. And then the payments to the cleaning supplies is 20, currently $28,000, about $29,000. What we're actually, the $153,000 would actually kick in for the FY 2020 budget. What we're recommending to get through this year is actually to bring it up to $125,000 with a 3% increase to the $116,000 that I just mentioned. So I just, I, we just want to be clear on those numbers.
Yeah. So is this a one-year contract?
It's a one-year extension.
One-year extension?
Yes. And, and it is my intention to, to begin the, the procurement process fairly quickly so that we can get somebody on board as soon as this one-year extension expires, whether it be WNA or another contractor.
You know, I just sat down with the calculator and figured the numbers, you know, if we were paying $80,000 a year in '15, we signed it in April '15, so in '16, if we went up 10%, we're at $88,000. For '17, we're at $97,680. And, and this year, we should be at $107,448. That's, that's at 10% a year.
What's confusing about this, as the city manager mentioned, is over the years, what turned out to be, and this has been frustrating to me as well since I've started here, what has started off to be one contract for one amount, has gone to cleaning windows for another $8,000, for extra cleaning at Johns Pass for another seven, another $10,000 for cleaning up the activity center. It's just been a, a patchwork for the last couple of years to where we are right now.
And to Director Pierce's comments, is that, that's exactly the case, that you had multiple, you had the one contract, but then you had ancillary services that were being charged for all these other elements. This particular contract pulls everything together and has a clearly delineated scope of work versus the other contracts realistically, and in some cases, it wasn't contracts, I had to have the finance director pull historical data to look at what was charged against the contract and what was charged for other services. So this brings it all under one umbrella and cleans it up substantially.
You know, this isn't the only contract that the city has that, that has 15 different pieces to it. A good example is our, our computers. You know, we pay for the computers and that program, and then they add this, and they add this. Why can't we get contracts that handle the whole thing? Why do we keep playing these silly games? And, you know, Joe's coming to us and saying, well, I need $6,000 more to do this, or $7,000 to do that, or $8,000 to do that. You know, and we're just saying, okay, okay, we need complete contracts, period.
Commissioner, I, I can't speak to the computer contract, however-
I understand.
With it, with this, in this specific regard, just in my professional opinion, being here for, you know, a full week, the specs and the scope of work that we should be putting into a cleaning service contract needs to be greatly enlarged and, and given more specificity than it currently does. And for that process to occur, for us to go through and make all of those specifications very clear, so that we can have a contract like you're saying, it'll take a little bit of time. And that's why we want to extend this for a year, and then get to that point so that we can do a competitive process.
So when we're saying the $153,000, there's not going to be anything else added in during the year? He's not going to say, well, I'm, I'm doing two windows rather than one, so here's another $50. This is going to include everything, is what you're telling me, period.
But one more time, that $153,000 would start October 1st. To get through the rest of the year, he would go, it would be $120,0510. I just want to be clear on that. And it would actually be October 1st that we include the supplies that the city manager indicated. So if this gets approved tonight, what we will do is ask him to start, you know, monitoring his supplies in lieu of him totally taking it over October 1st, and us, we will stop actually paying those vendors directly. That's also a pain for the finance staff, too, to pay, pay those vendors, I mean, again-
Well, why don't we change this a little bit, and pay him $153,000 right now, and he picks up all the supplies, period? You know, because once again, you've got this piece and that piece of the puzzle, you've got too many pieces of the puzzle.
The problem is, he's got, he's built up-
Inventory.
-a, a large inventory, and again, that's why we want to, if approved tonight, we would put him on notice to start monitoring and dwindling down that inventory, and we would actually limit the payments going forward that we would make to these cleaning vendors.
And at what time would he start picking it up? October, you're saying?
Starting October 1st, he would, he would totally pick that up.
Okay, let me back up for a second. October, on September 30th, he might have these supply rooms stacked on our dollars to that point, so when he starts off, you know, are we checking that? Do you understand what I'm asking?
Yes, yes, that's something that is handled by my staff. We manage currently, when he requests products, and he actually did that today, we, we needed some, a very specific cleaning supply, but it goes through our staff to review and, and analyze. So what we will do is track and make sure that we aren't purchasing a large bulk sum just before the contract changes over, so that way that, you know, we, we are keeping our money back as much as we can and turning it over to the contractor.
John, I can understand your heartburn, and, and let me just give you some historical data, because I was here when this contract was originally signed. We went from the old City Hall, where I, I don't even know if we had a cleaning contract, there probably shouldn't have been one, because it was disgusting. But then we got all these new buildings, and, and in, in all fairness, we tried just about everything in the beginning. The rec we had, I had a guy cleaning for $10 an hour, and he'd show up half the time and not do it. And when we found Angel and we started this contract, that was great, but then, just, I'm going to talk to you about the rec center. The rec center grew tremendously, and we started doing weddings over here, and we started doing weddings at the rec center. But at the time, we had a very conscientious rec director who actually charged the people renting out the facility a, I think it was a $200 cleanup fee. So all of that money, so this money seems like it's coming, and it's all coming out of the general fund regardless, but some of the rec revenue is part, is that still that works? Well, we still have, okay, so there's still, there's still a fee that's charged to everybody that uses one of these facilities. So some of this money is for cleanups on that. The problem is, in the beginning, we didn't know exactly what was going to go on. And then we'd have bathrooms down, we'd have a tournament going on, and, you know, the bathrooms would be clogged and overflowed, and we needed supplies, and Angel would come out. out. You know, I agree with you, maybe it needs to be looked at. I don't really know the numbers off the top of my head, but boy, we got a good one, man. Angel and Wanda do an amazing job. Let's get through this next cycle. And then, yeah, I think, you know, you put it out to bid, you take a peek. But, yeah, that's why the numbers look so convoluted. It's, it was really, those are growing pains, man. That's where all that comes from.
Mayor, may I ask a question? Director of Public Works, did you ever find, did you find a trail, or did anybody look to see if this was, number one, ever bid out in two thousand and fifteen when the current WNA Cleaning Services, you know, got the job? Was it ever a bidding process then? And why wouldn't it be one now at one hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars? You know, I think that they also do an excellent job, but I'm just concerned about the non-bidding, okay?
I believe it was bid out in two thousand and fifteen as a part of a competitive process. I don't know if it was quotes or bids. I didn't, I got the file last week and reviewed it and all of that, so I'm assuming that it did through that bidding type of process. But we did sign an agreement at that time which granted potential extensions. And so that's why we're coming back here and not just going out to bid, is we are allowed through the contract we already have with WNA, the ability to extend. And we're exercising that at this point, or we're asking you all to exercise it because we'd like the time to basically commit to a better scope of work. Right now, the scope of work pretty much includes which buildings we want to get cleaned. For a real janitorial service contract, we should have frequency, we should have what types of cleaning services need to be provided. There are a number of other things that really should be outlined. And again, as Commissioner Andrews said, we just didn't have that all together when we first contracted with this vendor back then. So, so to kind of long about answer your question, I believe it was competitively bid out, but that's why we aren't going out to bid just yet. We have the opportunity to extend.
And did you discuss with the current vendor maybe the opportunity to keep it for six months instead of the year so that we can really know that we're getting, I mean, we might be underpaying him, you know, or overpaying him, so that's...
That did not come up in my direct discussion with him, but I do believe, and maybe the city attorney can help me on this one, but I believe the extension requirements are for one-year periods. So even if we did want to have that conversation, it's not a part of the current contract that we have in place.
Well, we certainly don't want an interruption in our services, and we do get good, you know, we do get good service from WNA. And I certainly use the city's various different restrooms on my walks every day, so I would think that, I move that we approve the contract extension with WNA Cleaning Services. If no one else has any other comments, or we can just make that motion, okay?
Floor is now open, floor is now open for public comment. Floor is closed. Any more discussion? Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
The next item is approval of RFP two thousand and nineteen dash, or two thousand and nineteen dash one and contract with Duell Associates for design and construction of the Military Court of Honor. City Manager.
Madam Mayor, I will defer to Mr. Al Carrier, our engineer of record, to communicate a little bit about the process, and then I will add some remarks towards the end.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Al Carrier with Duell and Associates. The city advertised, they put out an RFP back in January and February for firms to design and build a Military Court of Honor within a specified budget of forty thousand dollars. We, as Duell and Associates, also tried to put together a team to put in a proposal. And what we found when we contacted the contractors, because of the size of the project and the nature of the project, we were having a difficult time coupling with a couple of the project, or a couple of the contractors that we had worked with in the past doing similar-type projects. So we had put together a proposal, kind of modifying what was actually in the original RFP. Our proposal was to go ahead and start off with design services, work with city staff, make sure we get all the elements of the Court of Honor that the city desires, and work with the city to make sure that that design is within the budget. The proposal before you is soup to nuts. It's surveying, permitting, conceptual designs. Once the conceptual designs are approved by the city at that estimated budget, we'll assist the city in advertising the plans and specifications. And then, once the contractor is selected, we'll go ahead and do the construction observation oversight to make sure that it's constructed within the plans. What is the budget? It was, it's forty thousand dollars.
Madam Mayor, if I may, to add on to Mr. Carrier's remarks, is that we have the opportunity, a young man by the name of, I believe, Sean Conley, if I'm saying his last name correctly, is a Eagle Scout and has approached the city of Madeira Beach about the possibility of working with us on a project. And I think this particular project, understanding the sensitivity and the importance this project has to our community, would be an exceptional project that I think he can assist us on the project management side as well as the capital campaign. Obviously, we know that the cost for this type of facility will probably find us in the realm of close to maybe sixty thousand dollars or more. But certainly, I think with some community discussions and some synergy, and being the closest community to Bay Pines, I think there's a lot of folks that would be willing to support such an initiative. The money that is being utilized or that has been appropriated for this particular project is from the Deepwater Horizon BP oil settlement money. So it's not money that's coming out of the general fund or any operational funds for departments. Certainly, what we would like to do, like Mr. Carrier said, is put together a design that you, the Board of Commissioners, have an opportunity to provide some perspective, and then moving forward with a competitive solicitation process, and then ultimately constructing this facility that staff believes will be a very important and special place for a lot of folks that have served this community, who have lost their loved ones as a result of some of the conflicts that we've had as a nation. So staff has decided about the opportunity to move forward. We're requesting authorization from the board to proceed forward in such a fashion, and then ultimately bring our good friend Sean along to help us with the project. And his mother is in attendance here in the meeting, and so we're excited about having a local resident participate in this project. And I'm assuming that there will be a lot of folks that will be assisting us on the capital funding campaign, because we're going to see how many folks work with us to see this project come to fruition. And staff stands prepared to answer any questions the Board of Commissioners may have.
Jonathan, what I'd like to do on this is have a meeting, because I've talked to Marine Association, Marine Corps League, the VFW, American Legion, and a couple other that said that they would be very interested in picking up on some of this cost. But they want to have a hand in how it's going to be designed, you know?
No problem.
The way I think we need to start is to have a meeting, bring them in, and let them throw their ideas, and let's see what sticks and what doesn't stick. But, you know, I think each one of these organizations is very adamant about making it done right, you know? So, and I can get you names of the people to contact to come in for this kind of stuff and go with it from there.
Absolutely.
I have a few comments. I think that it's a good project. I wanted it and supported it from the beginning, but I really don't want it to be anything more than, I guess, simple, okay? I think that it's honoring, it's not showing off. It's really honoring. And I have seen Mr. Carrier's work at, I think it was Hunter Park that I went out to in Bel Air, and that's beautiful, but that's on a totally separate, you know, on a much grander scale than what I certainly had, you know, thought for us. So I'm in favor of the project, but I think that we all need to keep in mind to keep it simple, because it's for the honor, not for the show. And besides, we don't have, you know, we have the space, our space is limited. Thank you.
Jonathan, you know how I feel about this. We've talked about it many times, and I'm very impressed with everything I've seen here, and I'm excited about this project going forward. I do want to ask, would there be an area where maybe retired flags can be put into a box of some kind and maybe work into the plan of having the disposal for the flags? Don't know what the legal term would be for it, but to remove the flags and bury them properly.
Absolutely, and that's to Commissioner Dowther's point. When we have some of the community discussions, we'll bring some boards to show them, the public some options. But to your point, one of the things that was communicated to the Board of Commissioners and was a desire is to have a place where flags can be retired as well, so partnering up with the Boy Scouts or other agencies to where we can collect flags as well as dispose them in the appropriate fashion. And that would definitely be something that we would look to add to the design elements of the final product.
I just think that would be really the coming together of the community. You've got the military, you've got the Boy Scouts, you know, anyone else who wants to join in and taking care of this project, and I think it'd be a good coming together. Thank you.
Absolutely.
You know, when you talk about disposing of the flags, right now, the American Legion, VFW, we all take the flags and dispose of them properly. They go, most of us, most of them go to Bay Pines to be disposed of properly. So like, if they have a collection area out there to put them into, same as they would have at the VFW, American Legion, whatever, and then either one of the service organizations, such as American Legion or VFW, could go there on a regular basis and pick them up and take them out to be disposed of properly. And I think, you know, they handle them quite well at Bay Pines, so that would be my recommendation in that area.
I agree with what everybody said. I did, I don't know if I presented it to you guys when you guys first got in, but when I was here, Seminole Rotary, Al, you might have been involved with this, too, when we did the design for the, for lack of a better word, they called it a pit, to retire the flags properly. And they were willing, we had three, four different proposals in front, and I don't know if they ever saw the light of day, but I could certainly reach out to them, but they would love to be a part of something like this, especially since they wanted to build it right, pretty much in the area where you guys are talking about now. This is the first I've seen this project. I think it's fantastic. I'd love to figure out a way to get more money into the hands of the veterans that needed it, but you know what? This is, this is great. This is great.
I think we'll open the floor for public comment at this time. Floor is closed. Any more discussion?
No, I would like to make a motion. I'd like to move to approve the contract with Duell and Associates for professional services for the Military Court of Honor in the amount of fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars.
I'll say it. Fourteen thousand? I thought you said forty.
Well, this, what we're proposing right now is the fourteen-five for the design, the...
That will be part of the total fourteen thousand.
Right. I thought that Commissioner Dowther, you wanted to get a group in here to work on the design with us before we passed off this to Al. I think that's a great idea. That's why I'm bringing it up.
I was going to meet with Al and everybody and be formal with that, but the money wouldn't be spent until...
Right, as part of the engagement, Al's team would come and have a community charrette, get input, go back and sketch some concepts and, you know, provide some visuals with regards to what we're looking at.
Thank you.
Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Next item is approval of the RFP and contract for Crystal Drive Repair over Crab... Mr. Carrier.
Mayor, Commissioners, to be more specific, this is the little bridge on Island Drive that connects Normandy and Crystal, excuse me, Normandy Road and Crystal Drive. It's the one and only bridge that the city owns and maintains. The Florida Department of Environmental Transportation has a program through, it's our local government bridge inspection program. They come out typically every other year and inspect our bridges at no fee to the city. On January two thousand and eighteen, they sent a report into the city, and the report basically said the bridge is in good condition, but it had some minor repairs that were required as ongoing maintenance. Some of those repairs are sealing joints, construction joints, pressure washing the superstructure and resealing it, restriping, fixing some of the spalding areas where the concrete has spalded off the structure. Mr. Evans had given us the report, Duell and Associates the report. We put together an RFP so that we could get contractors to go ahead and bid on fixing the bridge. The city advertised the RFP and had a qualification that only the contractors that were pre-qualified with FDOT to be able to perform that type of work would be able to bid on the project. The city received two bids. The lowest bid came in from M&amp;J Construction. They're out of Tarpon Springs, I believe, and their bid for construction is one hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety-three cents. There's going to be a ninety-day construction time period for them to work on the bridge, and staff recommends approval with the contract for M&amp;J Construction.
Thank you. Any discussion from the board?
Yes, I just wanted to ask a question of Mr. Carrier or the city manager. Is the delay on this, as I look at it and read it back over again, December seventeenth and January two thousand and eighteen, and we're fifteen months after that, is this one of those projects that fell through the cracks? Or, I mean, is this...
The report was done, the inspection was done in January. I think the city didn't receive it probably till like early summer of last year.
Okay.
And then it took us a couple months to put together the RFP. We had to do a little investigation. It's a little out of our Bailey work, if you will, so it took us a little bit of time to put together the RFP, make sure we had all our bases covered. And then, so we put it out to bid in January. We don't want to put it out to bid in the holidays, because I think the RFP ended up being ready like in November. So it was elected just to delay it a few months and do it at the start of the new year.
Okay, I was just curious, because I did look at the agreement, and I did look at his state verification or state FDOT requirements and stuff, and he's already renewed it for the next year, so that's good, you know? But I was thinking, that's an awfully long time, so, okay, thank you.
So, Madam Mayor and Commissioners, just to be clear, this is not budgeted, and it wouldn't have to come from, if approved, from fund balance. And I would probably come back, probably in July, with other budget amendments to be approved by the board, and this would be one of them.
We'll open the floor for public comment.
Chuck Dillon, five-twenty-nine Lillian Drive, that that bridge is going to be affecting me dramatically. So was there a second bid? Was that Proshot?
It was.
What was their bid?
Bear with me, I do have it.
This is why RFPs do not always work. You got two bids, and you're maybe lucky if you got two.
The Proshot came in at one hundred and sixty thousand, one oh five, about ten thousand, eleven thousand dollars more than M&amp;J.
And that's all just for minor repairs?
Yes.
Okay. Wow. Seems like a lot of minor repairs.
Al, you did mention the timeframe. Could you tell me what the timeframe is again? I'm sorry.
Ninety days, once we issue commencement.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
I'm so happy to hear that...
Name and address again, please.
Cindy Stiles, 4828 Miramar Drive. I wanted to say, I'm so happy to hear that you are preserving this bridge, because bridges are also included in historical preservation. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wish to speak? Floor is now closed for public comment.
Yeah, quick question then. The other bridge, the one, and I know when we had the public meeting, it got brought up a lot, the one from Flamingo to Crystal Drive? Is that our bridge? You said it's the only bridge.
It is our bridge. It's not, in DOT's eyes, it's not considered a bridge, because it's just a culvert underneath.
Okay.
It's more of a causeway, where this bridge here has bridge abutments, it's on piling.
Okay, cool, thanks, ma'am.
Well, if there's no other comment, I move to approve the construction contract with M&amp;J Construction Company of Pinellas County for the Crystal Drive Bridge Repair over Crab Key for the amount of one hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and ninety-one cents.
I'll second. I think safety is a priority.
Any more discussion? Will the City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Our next under new business, we have Resolution 2019-07, requesting support and funding for navigable waterways.
Madam Mayor, if I can have the City Clerk read this resolution in its entirety, and then staff will provide some additional information.
Yes. Resolution 2019-07, a resolution of the City of Madeira Beach, supporting and requesting a budget appropriation request to preserve navigable waterways throughout the City of Madeira Beach to include, but not limited to, John's Pass, providing for separability, providing for repeater, providing for an effective date. Whereas, the City of Madeira Beach unequivocally supports navigable waterways throughout county and more specifically within its municipal boundaries, and whereas the Board of City Commissioners for the City of Madeira Beach believes John Pass is a vital asset to the tourism economy as it provides quick and easy access to the Gulf of Mexico, and whereas, given that this natural amenity has been a vital part of Madeira Beach and Pinellas County's rich history, hundreds of thousands of guests have experienced the pristine waters of the Gulf of Mexico because of this natural asset, and whereas, because of the constantly shifting tides and currents, public infrastructure is routinely impacted by sand deposits and stormwater systems, and strong currents have made navigability for both public and private boaters profoundly challenging and have rendered some commercial docks to be unusable, and whereas the City of Madeira Beach is in full support of Pinellas County concerning inlet navigable waterways and is requesting the Board of County Commissioners assistance in ensuring that John's Pass and its public and commercial operations remain accessible to all visitors of Pinellas County, and whereas the City of Madeira Beach is requesting that the county staff consider providing additional funding for inlet navigational and maintenance dredging to ensure that a vibrant tourism economy continues for the enterprises operating out of John's Pass at Madeira Beach, and now therefore, let it be resolved by the City of Madeira Beach Board of City Commissioners that Section 1, this resolution shall take effect upon its passage and approval by the City of Madeira Beach Board of City Commissioners, introduced and adopted by the Board of Commissioners of the City of Madeira Beach this night, day of April 2019.
Madam Mayor, members of the Board of Commissioners, I've had an opportunity to speak with one of our county commissioners with regards to some of the challenges that we experienced over in John's Pass. With the shifting sands and the current being so strong over there, we find situations whereby sand does deposit and impact our outfalls and some of our inlets as well. One of the things that the county has an inlet navigational program, and they basically dredge to ensure that marine vessels can make their way safely out into the Gulf of Mexico, et cetera. What the City of Madeira Beach is requesting of the Board of County Commissioners is to look to amend their definition to allow for the assistance for some maintenance dredging for some of the commercial and public docks that we have throughout our community, specifically in that area. Because that is a major economic driver for our community, and one of the things that we provided in our mission, vision, and core values that we want it to be the gateway to the Gulf, we have to ensure that people can get onto the Gulf. And so, I've had some very productive conversations with the county commissioner. There is going to be discussions on the budget process through the Board of County Commissioners about this, so I had communicated to that county commissioner that we'd bring a resolution forward and request that the Board of Commissioners adopt said resolution and then send it to the Board of County Commissioners for consideration, and hopefully, we'll see the definition change and some monies that would come to the City of Madeira Beach, but more specifically to help our local businesses, whether it's the dolphin tours or our commercial fishing operations, anything, to ensure that we still have usable docks for public and private operations and commercial operations, as it's an important element to our community. So, staff stands prepared to answer any questions and recommend approval of Resolution 2007- or 2019-07.
I just want to make a motion that we approve Resolution 2019-07.
A second.
I'd like to make a comment before, but we've already made the motion and seconded it, but I would just like it to, for us to all remember too, that the, it is an intercoastal waterway there. I was going to ask you, is Treasure Island also going to participate, or has the county commissioner gone to Treasure Island since they are part of the waterway?
I'm assuming that there's been some conversations. I know that she has reached out to Sand Key and some other entities, but I'm not sure about Treasure Island. I just, our conversation was specific to Madeira Beach, but she did mention Sand Key as well having some issues.
Okay, because I just also remember when I was reading this, and I think it was really good, and I commend, you know, Commissioner Peters for, you know, bringing this up and trying to get more assistance, but I also, you know, we also must remember that the boardwalk that in Madeira Beach is, that's parallel to that John's Pass waterway, is overloaded with private, you know, recreational water businesses, and the responsibility of dredging, then doesn't that become something that goes to, what are you trying to say, the individual businesses?
It does.
I've seen that happen already, that's why I asked.
And so, the county is looking at possibly modifying the language to allow for some assistance for some of those businesses, because it is a costly proposition, and obviously, we know the current and the sand moves so swiftly there that you can dredge, you know, this month, and six months later, you're finding yourself in a precarious situation. So, the maintenance dredging and those types of things, they're looking at changing some rules possibly, but they want the support from the local beach communities, especially Madeira Beach, to see if that is something that we would be interested in supporting and helping champion the cause with our county commissioner.
I think it's a great idea, but also, did you, did she mention, did Kathleen Peters mention about when the latest John's Pass Bridge was constructed and how that has significantly put, shifted more of the sands toward Madeira Beach? I mean, has that ever been gone into?
We didn't get into that much, we didn't get into that much detail.
Okay, well, I'm for it, you know.
Floor is open for public comment.
I'm in a lot of support for this. This is a good thing. We need to do something about that. I spent a lot of time going in and out of John's Pass with my sailboat, and...
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Name and address.
Sorry, Robert Preston, 425 South Bay Shore Drive in Fair Beach. And the buoys don't even keep up with the sand, you know? It's a real problem. And when we talk about, when you were talking with the county about the groins, improving those groins, it may be something discussed with the county about that jetty may need to go out further to prevent some of that from happening, washing around and coming around there. You know, that may help some of that too. That should be maybe part of the conversation, you know, that we, that we look at that. You know, it's admirable that the Madeira Beach hasn't had to have our beaches re-nourished because of those groins. And it reminds me, I was down to Long Boat Key. We sailed down there, we'd go down there and spend nights on our boat and what have you, and it's, but have you seen the groins down there at Long Boat Key? They are about eight feet wide, about eight feet high, and they go out, they actually provide fishing platforms for people as well. So, they're a little bit larger, and they provide some groins. So, it might be, you might find out from them how they work and would it be beneficial to do that. A couple of things that would do for the city is that our tackle shops and our hotels and our stuff like that, if people have more places that, you know, a lot of people can't spend two hundred, three hundred dollars to go get on a fishing boat and go fishing, but if they got a fishing pole and they can go to Walmart and they can buy some bait and everything for thirty-five bucks, and they can go get on the end of a groin and do some fishing, that's going to bring more people into this town to enjoy our environment. So, there's a couple of things that we, that we can look at as well, but, you know, the jetty might be helped. I'd support this wholeheartedly. I think it's a start, not the conclusion.
Does anybody else wish to speak? Floor is open.
You know, I think...
Close for public comment.
He brought a very good point up, rather than putting a Band-Aid on it, we need to fix the problem, you know, so we need to be talking to Ms. Peters about that also, fixing the problem, not just putting a Band-Aid on it.
And Madam, that's my time. Time, my time. And what I can do is I will enclose a cover memo to some of the points that were stated with the resolution when it goes out about the jetty and some other things, just to provide a little bit more context to the resolution.
Any more discussion then? Will the City Clerk please call the roll?
Wait a minute, we didn't make a, who made the motion to make a resolution?
We did.
Oh, sorry.
We had that first.
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Weinstein?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Next, we have staff reports, community values survey question, City Manager.
Madam Mayor, staff has compiled the 2019 Community Values and Opinion Survey. Attached to your memorandum is a total of approximately 34 questions that we would like to put out to the public this week and allow for us to get some feedback and perspective on certain elements of city government and finding out what our community values. At this time, staff stands prepared to address any questions that you may have some concerns are, modify any questions that you think need to be modified or eliminate them, and we stand prepared to answer any and all questions on that.
I think it was a good one. I noticed that you added some, that you added some. You changed a little bit of the wording, which I thought was good, because it offers the opportunity to not just answer the question, but to think about it, okay, instead of just jumping to it. I think it's great that you're doing it again. I was going to ask you one thing. Yes, and this was a suggestion. If, if a person completing the survey would like to make a comment on any of these questions, is there's the opportunity to do that? I couldn't find it on the last year's one.
We did not include a opportunity for a comment, because, one, we retain that comment for public record, and in some cases, when we've seen those surveys, things have gone all over the map with respect to the comments, and then in some cases, it becomes personal and it gets to a point where it's...
So, it's not appropriate?
Yeah, it just lends itself to, you know, an opportunity for folks to vent versus getting some constructive criticism. And I've done this a lot, and, you know, nine times out of 10, you don't get a lot of value in those, those open-ended questions where people can write whatever.
I have a couple of comments on number, number 21. It asks, which digital platforms utilized by the city do you receive public information from? As on other places, I think that should check, you should say, check all that apply.
Okay.
And number 31, I think it says, is Madeira Beach a blank community destination, retirement, family-friendly? I think we should add residential. And on number 11, oh, my pages mixed up, but that's okay. What types of residences do you think Madeira Beach needs more of? And again, I think it should say, check all that apply. And my last comment is number 12. Why do you choose to live in Madeira Beach? Among all those great reasons, I think we should add for a small-town feel, because that's what I keep hearing all the time, that they like the small-town feel. Other than that, I think it's a great idea. Hey.
Any other recommended changes to the survey? Okay, I thank the board for your input on this. We will get it wrapped up and be releasing it no later than Friday. Quite possibly depends on some of the things we already have in the hopper to release, but Saturday at the worst-case scenario.
Do we need to make a motion and vote on it?
Uh, no, no, it's just, just making sure I get your input on the survey before we distribute it. That includes that item, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And finally, we've got reports and correspondence, City Commission, any reports or correspondence?
Just like to thank everyone again for coming out for the Trash Pirates cleanup on April the 6th. It was very successful, there were a lot of people there, and we'll be doing it again.
Okay. City Attorney, any reports?
No.
Thank you. City Manager?
None, Madam Mayor.
And City Clerk? It is 8:16, and we are adjourned.